Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, and welcome to the Paulding County Board of Commissioners July 28, 2015 work session. We'll welcome all our invited guests and any elected officials in the room. I see Mayor Debbie.
Oh.
And our Ms. Lyons, our Board of Education. It's great to have you here today. Anybody else? Thank you so much. I'll remind you to turn off all cell phones, next tells and pagers as it does interrupt the production of this. And Marshall, be your guest. This morning for our invocation and pledge, we have Commissioner Dave Carmichael. Will you stand with me if you're anxious?
Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for all the beauty and the wonderful things that we're able to experience. We just thank you for these citizens that are interested in what's going on in their community and their county. We pray for your guidance and your wisdom in all that we discuss and all the decisions that are made. We thank you for loving us and thank you for saving us through the love of Jesus Christ. In this time of difficulty. Amen.
Praise the Lord.
The light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Dave, that's a beautiful prayer. Minutes of July 14, 2015 work session minutes of July 14, 2015 board meeting minutes are available for your review. There are no announcements, no invited guests, no bid awards, no reports from committees and departments. Public participation on agenda item Kathy Gans, 191 local road.
What items?
She's picking on new business side of number one.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I just want to, I'm excited when I see a room full and I want to say thank you to all of our county employees. I know that when there's a transition happening, things are sometimes volatile and it's just nice to see smiling faces and know how hard they work. So, thank you. I also want to say that I'm pleased to see the 911 center being moved from the airport. It really shouldn't have been there to start with. It should, that wasn't just a bad location for it. And everything that we do in this county should not revolve around that airport. And while we're working on the fire, I mean, the 911 center, let's get that fire station built. Let's put it where it was originally planned at the entrance to the airport on 278. And the money, the splash funds were already there. We should not be using splash funds at a facility that's being managed by private company to increase their profits. This is just another reason to appeal that IBA. And let's get on with economic development. Let's get our industrial parks created. The grass is five foot tall. Get soil tests done. Let's get some spec buildings built. Everything is not, doesn't have to be done at the airport to go. You know, let's not build any more movie studios. Commissioner Colette, I got a chance to listen to him speak Saturday about economic development. He has some great ideas, he has some, he has some great thoughts and I was extremely impressed. Thank you, Commissioner Colette. So, I think that we need to pay attention and listen to some of the things that he has to say. That's all I have. Thanks.
There's free consent agenda items. Number one, declare items listed as surplus and donate these items to the industrial building authority. Water department has a 95 new hawthorn tractor and they also have a bush hog. Number two, declare items listed as surplus and approve their disposal for auction or trade. 911 has a Chevrolet Blazer. The tax assessor has a 97 Ford Escort. The health department has a Ford Taurus, a 2000 Ford Taurus. Water department has an old one for a branch. Number three, declare attached items listed as surplus and approve their disposal through the Paulding Immaterial Radio Emergency Service. There's a number of models of radios and a number of, I think seven base units to pick up, be picked up from state surplus. Would you like to move any of these items for regular session?
Chairman, I would like to move number one for regular session.
Okay.
Allow number two and three to stay in some items.
Need a motion?
I make a, I make a motion to move number one to the regular agenda to be able to vote on.
Second.
Question second. Any discussion?
All of them say aye.
Aye. Here's five of them. There's no old business under new business. Discuss action to approve termination of the contract with Paulding County Board of Commissioners, the prime construction, construction of the 911 fire station facility located on the airport parkway. Davenport, you want to talk about this?
Sure. Back in, I believe it was October 2013, we issued a contract with prime contractors to construct the 911 fire station facility. And then construction is halted, halted at that site for some time. And so, we have just put the contract on hold.
Due to a, move into.
Due to court ruling. So, we have just kind of held that contract in place until this time. And there's been some discussion as to whether or not we should, 911 is desperate for facilities. They're out of space and whether we should move, continue to wait or move this to a different location. But before we explore moving this to a different location, we need to terminate the existing contract that we have with the facility. And that's what is out of those.
Any questions?
I don't think so. We've talked for several months concerning this and we had an opportunity to talk to you some more yesterday, so I think they sound pretty clear with it.
Number two, discuss action to a regular.
Mr. Chairman Holden, are we totally moving off of the termination of the contract with prime by going to the next agenda? Because I did have a couple of thoughts. I just wanted to express my thoughts in the right time in the agenda here. So, is that, we're talking about closing the contract with prime and also in conjunction with that would be item two, to contract with Crofton Associates to design at a different location on industrial way. So, Tony, I'm sorry I haven't been able to talk with you, talk to you with Commissioner Colette and Commissioner Lawson, Commissioner Poundell. The vote was taken in November of 2013 and it was unanimous vote, five vote to locate at the airport. There was a deal to be able to get free pad or the dirt moved and repaired, pad repaired at no cost because the dirt had to be moved anyway for overruns to the airport, the runway. So, there was incentives there for us to have it there plus post two did not have a fire station for adequate coverage and to lower the premiums for the citizens that live in that area, which is fortunate if you live within proximity of a fire station as I do. Cause your premiums go down significantly with the quicker response down. So, needing a 911 center as we have and probably all of you, I did not have been out there and toured it with David Mumford. It certainly is evident when you go there that it needs to be replaced. And there's, and having a multipurpose building under one roof instead of multiple roofs, you know, you don't have two parking lots. You don't have two utility connections. You don't have two utility bills. You don't have other construction costs, insurance and, you know, IT connections. So, all that can be consolidated as in the fire station, check it out, I don't know the number where your administrative building is, but it's both the function of administration and firefighting with the fire trucks right there at the end of the building. But it's the one behind Home Depot. So, that's an example of a multipurpose building under one roof that provides the citizens, the taxpayers, a great savings. To have it at the airport, if you could even realize a third mission because when you have commercial aviation, the airport or not, if you, if you just have airplanes coming in for maintenance and overhaul or you have some finishing site out there, which we'd like to have corporate activity out there, it would still be excellent to have a fire truck when a mission's developed at the airport like that. So, we paid, Crofton Associates, the taxpayer paid. The government didn't have the money. The taxpayer paid a bill for design of $298,000 plus $30,000 for prime contractors, plus $30,000 to Atlanta Gas Line. For a total of $358,000 that has already been expended at this location, not to mention the free dirt that we got because we were moving dirt out there anyway. And that's why it was unanimous vote. It was a win-win. It was a good deal. It wasn't because it was at the airport. I don't really care where the 911 center is located. I don't really care where the fire station out there is located as long as it, if somebody's house catches on fire, the fire truck can get there. So, it's not a bias toward the airport, please. I think we've talked about that in a prior conversation. Just a couple more things. If I were, if I were a taxpayer and knew that $358,000 had been spent to locate a multipurpose facility at the location voted on by the board of commissioners in 2013 and then it was scrapped to move to another location, I would be furious. I would be up in arms at approaching a half a million dollars that's just down the tubes. The, of course, everyone knows that the environmental assessment is tied to the airport because of the potentiality of having commercial aviation out there. But if you survey the path, the property where the multipurpose facility, the fire station slash 911 center is going to be located, you survey that and then take it out of the airport and just call it a fire department property, 911 property, then it's no longer associated with the environmental assessment. And that may take three, six months to get that done, but then you could proceed with the plan you have and not waste the taxpayers $358,000. And you don't have to redesign it. That's another part is Crofton Associates have given us a cost of 192,000 additional dollars to design a single purpose 911 center on industrial boulevard. So, again, the costs continue to stay higher for the taxpayer because you've got, initially you're going to build that fire station, so now you've got two facilities and you've got two sets of bills on everything. So, I just don't see that the citizens of Paulding County are really the ones being considered if we think about changes.
Yeah, no, I feel like it would be a good idea to move it. We do, we do not own the land now. Land is down by the airport authority. We'd have to like, Commissioner Carmichael said, give us that land back. I don't know if they would or if we want to talk to them about it. But even if they did, I still like the idea of having both of those facilities together. Talking about a location where storms seem to be at their worst in the county and maybe it's not the best place to put it. We don't need the 911 center to be knocked out because of the storm. We do have a location that is bad about the month, it's had about the month, but that's, it wasn't our doing. Things happen. It probably wasn't the best possibly pop through to start off with. So, you know, I do think that this is an option we need to look at, thank you for it.
Mr. Carmichael, are you aware of the fact that there's wiring and things that are in place have saved us $100,000 within itself over at the new location? And, you know, I'm big on motives, what you motive for doing something. Sometimes circumstances, I'm big on circumstance, they change. Don't know how long the airport's going to be tied up in lawsuits. But I can tell you this, the 911 center now is in that, and it needed to be moved along a long time before now. And I think that we might want to talk to Crofton Associates about some things, have some discussions. I think some numbers can change.
Well, remember, you can survey the plat out at the airport and that's detached from the environmental assessment and it's no longer part of airport property.
I'm not aware, I don't know much about that, but I do know that the dirt being moved, the pad being put there, it was, it was actually, they needed that dirt, airport did, when they moved, they put that pad, they needed that dirt.
But if we're expensive to move dirt and so since they were moving the dirt anyway, we got a free pad. And that's one of the reasons that Commissioner Poundell voted for it to be located out there. And I am aware of the wiring situation. I think we could definitely use a brief from Mr. Lyons and Mr. Mumford on the type of tower and the type of connections fiber. The fiber does go out to the airport and AT&amp;T engineers have said that there won't be any cost to run the trunk lines. David Mumford has communicated to me that it takes a 16 truck line for the type of communications used at the 911 center. But that would be at no cost to Paulding County because the 16 trunk line would go right up the airport parkway to the site. It's the tower part that I don't have a very good understanding of, but having been an aviator, I do know the line of sight is critical and around an airport, since airplanes are line of sight communications, that I think that it could be worked out quite well to communicate back to the tower that's located near the 911 center now. But I'd like to get a briefing on that from Commissioner Colette or experts.
Tampa, do we own the property on North Industrial Way?
North Industrial Way, no, sir, we don't.
Who owns it?
IBA.
IBA?
I like to say just a couple of things. A lot of comments up here are correct. Hundred percent. We've talked about this for a while. You and I talked Sunday after church concerning this, but we had also talked about it months before. And there's several things to consider here. Yeah, the dirt was moved and there was a pad ready site put in, but they needed the dirt. They're just, we didn't have somebody come up there and out of goodness of their heart move the dirt. They needed the dirt. So, they moved the dirt and made a pad ready site, which there still is a pad ready site there for something else going on in the future, whether it be something like this or something else. So, that's, that part's not going to go to waste. I get frustrated too with money spent that we don't need to spend. I get frustrated when it's put out there and we have all these, you know, folks coming back and asking us for more and more and more. We got rock and we found this and we found that. Private sector is going to work that way, but they keep coming back. So, I understand. Couple of things here. I think we can save roughly 100,000 over there on industrial way with some of the infrastructure utilities that we have there that we, that are more accessible, more ready to go. We've got a shared driveway there with deep bags. I think that's a minimum that I feel like probably more, to be honest with you, than 100,000 dollars. Also, I think that we're planning maybe to meet with Croft this afternoon to do a little talking, post commissioners, two at a time. And so, that was also worked out. And so, we're, we're planning to do that, to look, to talk to them and see, hey, what else can you do to kind of help us out on it? But I think we've got to realize this, that yeah, the environmental assessment's holding it up. We don't know when that's going to be done. We've been told all year it's going to be any day, but it's actually going to be in the end of the year or sometime the first quarter of next year. And according to some of the information that I've received on that and the letters from the FAA, that they're a little concerned about some of the work being done. It could be longer, but the bottom line is, we're in need of a 911 center. I've talked to a lot of folks in the county about the 911 center. I won't mention names because I don't want anybody getting beat up over it. But the bottom line is, it's overwhelming that the folks that know a little bit about it, that we probably should have and need to put it over there on industrial way. And so, sometimes we got to do what we got to do to, to take care of things, make things The fire station is in the mix. Bottom line, the pad's still there. I don't necessarily agree the fire station needs to go there. I think there's other things that we can do to work out. I've also tried to get some information from the FAA and from the airport authority concerning a couple of things when it comes to the fire station. What does the FAA actually require? Commissioner Carmichael and I talked Sunday and he, he is a pilot and he's done a whole lot more flying than I have. I like to stay on the ground, but he made comments that, you know, you've flown in airports and the trash truck is sitting beside the runway and not in a shelter and so we need to find out what the requirements are as far as that's concerned with the FAA. And we do need to move forward with firehouse out there in that area and post two. And I've got some ideas of what we can do, where it can be a win-win for, for everybody out there. So, that's something that we have talked about, that we'll talk about in the future. It's going to take a little bit more time because of some other things going on and I'll be willing to bring that up maybe a little bit later in the meeting. But I think it's in the splash vote for the 911 center and we're going to be having another splash vote, vote real soon. We haven't taken care of some of the things we need to in this one. And we've got the board set aside and I think it's time that we pull the trigger and get this thing done for our employees and for the citizens of the county. Get you guys out of where you're at and the Sheriff Department will then have a little bit more room, which is what he needs.
Well, may I ask you, express your thoughts? I'm not saying let's not do the 911 center. I'm just saying survey out the plat so it's no longer connected to the airport and then the environmental assessment is no longer a requirement for the pad, the ready pad, to give discussion. And we need the 911 center very badly. And yeah, it may be 100 grand, but we've already, you know, for the wiring and things that Mr. Crowe's talked about, we've already spent 398,000 or 358,000 dollars. So, you know, it's built, it's just a matter of whether you have to have it. And I don't think we have enough information. This all came up, I guess, last Friday.
No, actually, this came up five, six months ago. We've been talking about it. Well, I think mainly it's come up because our, really our contract is expired. We couldn't expect prime to stay with it and so we're having this discussion and, you know, if we could back up for a second and separate now, does this give some kind of success to the airport? No, it doesn't. It gives success to the people that live in that area, just like we've done with the fire station down on Mobile area offering, where the people in the Georgian and surrounding areas are now willing to be able to have a lower ISO rating. You've got an airport, you've got to have safety there and you're going to have to have a fire station. One day, we will have to go back and build a second one if we don't build this one where we can respond to, there's a certain timeframe that the FAA looks for, for response time. And so, that's critical. And you've got an asset that the FAA has built. There's something more than 57 million dollars federal money. And somebody said, well, it's my taxpayer dollar. It's actually paid from the FAA by people that travel through airports and they pay for fees. So, you know, it's, it's an asset that we've got there and I'm like Commissioner Carmichael, it makes plenty of sense to have both facility. I got a scathing email this morning, what were we thinking by moving this facility and wasting all this money by a taxpayer that has land in that area and also holdings throughout the county? And, you know, he says it's okay to share his name. I'll be glad to share that with you, but it was pretty scathing, I think. You guys had also, Mr. Carmichael, that, you know, what in the world are we thinking? That it's all about some kind of cancerous feeling about the airport. Most people, if you're in Cobb County, look how they took advantage of their airport. They've got a port of entry there now, so international lines, all types of people can come in there because they've set up a customs office. So, you know, while we were sleeping and fighting and being sued by Delta, you know, they're going out and building a great structure there to increase their transportation abilities in Cobb County. We should learn from people like that. But I, I think it makes perfect sense to take a look at this and I know we got another number two on here to talk about what it would cost to redesign this. And again, you know, when we're talking about airport property and we're talking about industrial way, we don't know neither one of those two pieces of length. So, we need to have a discussion with the industrial building authority and the airport authority to see, you know, what kind of plans they have for that facility and where they plan to go. Go with it. I think it's, you know, we've got all tied up and we're going to do everything we can to be anti-airport and some of this absolutely doesn't make any sense at all.
It's my understanding, Chairman, that the 139 is what response file required remains at general aviation airport. We don't have to have like fire station there. Is that correct?
You're correct on that. But, you know, let's, let's say for instance, if we did, like the facial response we would have for that, the better off we'd be. And we would still serve the citizens in that area. This in no way is going to promote the airport in any way. It's just, looks like good companies.
Well, I too, I'm concerned about taxpayer dollars. Yes, we do have a 57 million dollar asset that was with taxpayer dollars. The fee is a tax. You can call it what you want to, it's still a tax somebody paid. And that tax was used to build the airport, an airport which we just gave away to the airport authority that we have no control over. Now, I also understand that the county has approximately 7 million, right?
Probably.
So, we're talking about maybe 300,000 that we lose when we've lost 7 million that we have no say so over now because of the IBA.
If it were another project, if it were any other project besides an airport, and as a business person, and I'll speak to you on your business sense, as a business person, if somebody said, we're going to build you a 47 million dollar facility and you have to put 7 million in it. We do this for our libraries every single day. We do this for the state, for the DDS building. We do this for the state patrol. It's capitalizing on an asset that's already here. Look, folks, I didn't build this. All I promised to do was make this thing be successful. And this league seems like one of the areas that it could.
You know, Cobb County's airport, Colton Field is not commercially, it has not, does not have a 139. We could attract that business here without it. Why are they not attracting business now? Why is airport for not got businesses here already today? They could have businesses if they could. Of course, I support having aviation jobs in this county, but I do not support the commercialization airport. We can do it without the 139. Now, as far as this, and this kind of getting off topic, but as far as the 911 center, I don't feel that's the best location for it anyway. There are better locations and I think that's what we need to explore. I think it was lumped together because it was something that was convenient at the time. Well, things have changed and maybe it might cost us a little, but we probably still need to look now and do what's best for the county. And I feel it's probably best not to be there.
We'll agree to disagree and. We'll agree to disagree. And if you want to, we'll go ahead and move on to item number two. I'm sorry, is it okay? Do you want some something? We are discussing it because of the contract, but I think we're discussing it because of other things, because it's been brought up before. The 911 center and how long we waited and how long we may have to wait. There's a lot of things that we're not sure of. If we continue on and environmental assessments coming back in February or March and there's some issues or there's other lawsuits or there's whatever, then how long are we going to wait?
Well, I think, Mr. Carmichael, forgive your solution to that.
Well, yeah, and I did hear Mr. Carmichael's solution to that. I don't know how long that would take. And I don't know that we would actually be able to do that. And after kind of checking into some things with 911 and some employees there and talking to people that know more about it than we do, I still feel like that this site was a site that was actually one of the sites chosen. Is that correct? At one time? And so, it's not like we're just going out here and just picked another site. This was actually on the list too. And I think this is something that we can get moving with and get done. Before decisions are made out there, we could have a 911 center built. And I think that's the thing to do. You kind of brought up the fire station. Everybody brought up the fire station. That's post two. That's my area. And we want that fire station out there. We need that fire station out there. I've asked the questions, have not gotten the answers as far as the 911, as far as the fire station's concerned with the FAA, what the requirements really are. And the bottom line is this, if we'd had some of these discussions here in public the last two, three years, we probably wouldn't be here having to have these discussions today.
We did have those discussions.
Because we would have gotten some of these answers when it comes to what does the FAA require and what do we really need. We, there's actually, there's actually some property down at the beginning of the airport, when you pull in the airport, on the left, corner on the left, that actually the IBA put under contract with a citizen in the county back in 2006, May 18th, 2006. I've got the contract sitting in front of me. The, it was roughly 6.203 acres. And I'm not going to go over it all exactly right now. Roughly about 1.143 acres was to be cut out for the road to be put on to get up to the airport. And then the IBA would have the rest of it. And it was kind of a joint venture. And the IBA was going to make that successful. And this fellow was going to get paid at a later date. It was a five-year contract. It was 2006. Y'all can figure it out. It's This citizen has not been paid for this from the IBA. And this is something that I would like to look at. And I've mentioned this before, Commissioner Carmichael, and just several of you. And this is something I would like to look at to put the firehouse there. It's a couple of things, a couple of reasons. One is right there, very visible on 278. It's right there at the airport. And it's also, we've got a citizen where the IBA has not paid this debt that we need to do something with.
No, I think there's an agreement there, and the citizen agreed to it. They're in a joint venture. It's not like he's sitting out there waiting on payment. It is a joint venture. When they look at it, and I didn't have anything to do with this, you know, I inherited this just like y'all did. But it was a joint venture for potential commercial. That was their idea. And it was an agreement between all those parties. So it's not like, oh, well, we're just waiting to be paid. That wouldn't end at all if it was actually a joint venture and how they ended up looking at this. Well, we've got a lot of options to look at. I think we ought to look at all of them, including what Mr. Carmichael said. We'll see how long it takes to do a survey and how quickly that could be surveyed out. We'll see on industrial way what the property would be like there to be purchased or received, or also at the airport to be purchased or received. But I think we've got a lot to look at. And, you know, mainly what we're looking at here is, we've had a contract due, expired, due, being tied up in a legal basis. So, you know, we had to dismiss that contract. We can't hold those people that contracts to, to what?
Well, the discussion kind of continues on. And that's what's brought us to where we're at. But I want to make a couple of things clear. This citizen is waiting for his money.
I'm sure he is. He's joint owner in the property.
I understand, has been. And basically, was supposed to be taken care of by roughly May 15, 2012. I have discussed this with several people. And I think this is something that we can work out. We can look into to see what we can do above making the citizen whole, see what we can do as far as having a fire station there, right there at the end of the airport parkway. And we can take care of a few issues at one time. So I don't want you to think that we're just looking at one thing and not looking at another. And we've been discussing it for the last four, five, six months. And I think you and I even had a conversation a little bit about as far as this is concerned with the IBA.
Thank you. Let's move on to number two. Discuss action to authorize contract to Croft and Associates to design the 911 facility to be located on industrial way.
Okay. In conversations with David Rumpert and with Jim Croft of Croft and Associates, we have asked him to give some proposal to take the design from the fire station and modify it so that it will fit on the brand at industrial way. And he has done that. I've given you all a copy of that proposal. And the total, as Commissioner Carmichael mentioned, is one hundred and ninety-two thousand nine hundred dollars.
Say that again.
One hundred and ninety-two thousand nine hundred dollars.
You talked to Croft, or we're going to have that meeting tonight?
Yes, we have.
Thank you so much. You're very kind. Number three, discuss action to approve and authorize the chairman to execute an amendment to the existing GARDEN Design Build Contract to include the design construction of one million gallon Macklin water tank for a cost not to exceed one million five hundred thirty-nine thousand.
Chairman, if it is acceptable to the board, I'd like to talk about both this and the next item since they are interrelated.
Okay. And I will read them before. Discuss action to authorize the Seymour contractor New South Construction to proceed with Phase Two of the Macklin Road Water System Facility in an amount not to exceed two million eight hundred fifty-one thousand nine hundred seventy-eight dollars.
Okay. Thanks, sir. As I've had the opportunity to talk about this project with each of you over the last week and a half, we have been, right now, we're scattered. Our operations are in, at Macklin Road. We're here on the first and second floors of the Watson Government Complex. We also have water operations staff out at our copper mine wastewater plant, both in the administration building and in some converted space that used to be storage that our meter readers are operating at. This Macklin facility consolidates or reconsolidates our water system administration, engineering, customer service, water operations, and meter reading back at Macklin Road. Also on this site, we have water system storage that will support our transition to becoming a water supplier and move to supply water from the north and west of the western portions of the county and away from the Combs Area Supply coming in from the east. I'd like to acknowledge, we've got some folks with us today. We've got our architect on the vertical construction, Jim Croft, our civil design engineer, Eddie Wade, and I believe our Seymour contractor, David Butler, is also here to answer any questions that you may have following the presentation. Kelly Comstock is going to talk about Phase One and the new tank and pipeline.
Thanks, Laurie. I'm Kelly Comstock, Program Manager for the Original Creek Reservoir Program, GARDEN Commissioners. Thanks for the opportunity. One of the improvements associated with Original Creek Reservoir is a new 36-inch pipeline that will convey water from the reservoir site down 61 to 278 and tie in the existing distribution system. At that vicinity, there's a need for additional storage because of the distance that the plant is away out the distribution system. And that storage is provided there to be able to address diurnal demands and peaks that occur throughout the daytime. And in the event of a fire, that water's not having to be conveyed all the way from the plant. So ultimately, they're under build-out conditions. When the plant is expanded to 36-inch, there will be four million gallons of storage that's necessary at this vicinity. In the near term, the plan is to install one million gallon, a one million gallon storage tank and expand that over time. There's currently a half a million gallon storage tank that's located at the vicinity. It's an older steel tank. You can see it there behind the existing building there. And on the site plan, you can see it in the center of the property. So that's in direct conflict with where the master plan of the facility is. It's too small to serve the future needs. So the program itself included is one million gallon storage tank. Due to the fact that this development's taking place and the plan is taking place, whereas we would normally be looking at this as one of the tail end things to be looking at and implementing, there's the opportunity to implement it now in conjunction and move forward with the tank. So the scope itself involves construction of a one million gallon concrete storage tank. It's a specially pre-stressed tank. There are only several different manufacturers that make this, Prom and PreCon, both out of Florida. And they, essentially, it's a low-maintenance facility. It's a concrete tank that doesn't require coating or painting like we have on a steel tank. And there's no issues associated with corrosion. In discussions with the ongoing construction, we came to a realization that the county would be in a very good financial position to move forward with implementing this now for several different reasons. One is the specialty tank contractor, Prom, is actually in the process of finishing up another tank here locally. So they have full crews. All their equipment is here. They won't have to be mobilized back down in Florida. They'll be able to mobilize very quickly to the site. Croy Engineering is the engineer associated with the Seymour contractor that's doing work out there on the facility. So we wouldn't have to have a situation where multiple engineers would be working and overlapping. You can have a very seamless integration of the tank improvements along with the planned expansion that Laurie's going to talk about in a minute. And it would save the county costs for time and procurement because we already have a team in place guarding Croy, which is one of the best pipeline contractors out there, as well as the engineer that we're talking about, that's in place for the role of our pipeline, for the commission approval. The facility includes not only the one million gallon tank, but about 600 feet of 24-inch pipeline that will connect that tank to the distribution system. We looked at the pricing that was provided. It's very competitive price. It's less than 75 cents per gallon of tank capacity for the tank itself. So it's below the budget that we were carrying for this facility within the planning documents that we have. We discussed this approach with GIFA to confirm that they'd be acceptable with all the funding that the reservoir took to make this and then report to it. And they're in complete agreement. And they feel that it makes a financial sense with the county as well. So the recommendation is to modify the current guarding Croy pipeline contract to include the Macklin tank improvements. Includes the storage tank, 600 feet of 24-inch pipeline, as well as the roadway improvements and some storm drains associated with it. And the total cost is one million five hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars for that one.
You've got your last note there. You've got approach acceptable to GIFA. As we've been in those meetings, they have approved our plan.
That is correct. Yes, they have.
And that's part of the money that they are plowing us?
That's correct.
But again, this money won't be required to be paid until?
After water production goes to place.
Pumping water out of the river.
That's right. So you're essentially, you know, you construct this and use it and not have to repay it until 2020. So it's a very good situation right now. Turn it back over to Laurie.
We have phased the facilities to reconsolidate into a Phase Two or a Phase Three? Phase Two. Also in the, also in the, in the, I shouldn't say in the way, but in the path of the construction of new facilities, we have our existing warehouse as well as several smaller storage facilities scattered on that site. And so, the first part of the facility that needs to be constructed is a warehouse, is a replacement of our existing warehouse. We put in Phase Two both a new warehouse and a barn for equipment storage that you see in the plan and the structures that blew. Our goals for the demolition and for the improvements to the warehouses and barns are to improve overall efficiency, provide us with better access control, and more secure storage of our inventory. To overall be able to enhance our inventory control, we'll have part of the area in the warehouse building will be fenced off with shelves so that materials, small, those smaller materials can be issued across the counter and to improve that accountability. The barn itself providing, it's a, it's covered storage with three-sided coverage to control weather onto our equipment and overall to increase the life expectancy of our equipment that is used to maintain the distribution system. We took both Phase One and Phase Two to our water and to our advisory board earlier this month. They have reviewed this and recommend that the board authorize our Seymour contractor, who was selected earlier this spring, New South Construction, to proceed with Phase Two of the water system facility in an amount not to exceed two point, two million eight hundred and fifty-one thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars. And that is within the budget that was allocated for the Macklin facility. Then the future, which still has to be scheduled with our upcoming financial plan, would be construction of the administration facility, parking associated with that, drive-throughs to also to allow us to improve customer flow and reestablish the convenience of that drive-through customer service that our customers became very comfortable with in our previous locations that they don't have here. And we'll reconsolidate the remainder of our staff here at Macklin, as well as, we've highlighted, the additional storage that will be required as the system continues to grow. You have any questions?
I think we've done a pretty thorough job. Any questions? Thank you. Thank you so much. Number five, discuss action to authorize, Chairman. Number five, discuss action to authorize the chairman to enter into a contract with Trans System Corporation in the amount of sixty-seven thousand three hundred and ten dollars and forty-two cents for the engineering design services for the core replacement over Davisville, Greecat, Lake Swan. George Jones, this is in post three. Scott, you've got a lot better luck there.
I was called Scott yesterday and I kind of took offense to that, to be honest with you.
And you're Scott on the steering wheel.
Well, I did have a massive increase in weight, but not that massive. Good morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to talk a little bit about this project. It's on Lake Swan Drive. And there's two actual locations. One is for southerly location. The pipes are in worse shape. There's also a location that's more northerly. There's also a location that's more northerly, where there's also pipes ending here in place. Both of them are triple corrugated metal pipe locations, and they're deteriorating right now. The southerly location is deteriorating at a worse rate than the northerly location. The head wall also on the southerly location is also failing. We're trying to make a diligent effort towards getting these pipes replaced in a timely manner so we're not stuck in a situation where a sudden storm comes up and causes damage, and we're not ready to get these fixed. So we're just trying to pursue this in a timely manner. If I can answer any other questions about...
Any questions for Laurie? I think we've been doing this for a while, so...
Thank you.
Right here, I'm going to take a quick moment, and let's take a five-minute break. And then we'll resume soon. I have old men's disease. Take a checkup. Discuss Action to adopt the Hallen County Purchasing Card Policy.
As you all know, we operate day-to-day operations using the State of Georgia Administrative Services Purchasing Card through Bank of America. We have quite a few restrictions that are on this account. We can give authorizations for types of purchases, amounts of purchases. We have about 25 cards throughout the county estimated. And it's a very efficient way of doing business for us in most instances. It doesn't... It allows departments to be able to get what they need, small purchases in a timely manner. Not everything can we order and get the next day. That just doesn't serve the efficient. We schedule registrations for trainings. Those are the... Most of the time, what we use the purchasing card for. That purchasing card goes through a fairly thorough review. We get the card in, we send the card out to the cardholder, and the cardholder has originally signed a statement stating that they will use the card for Hallen County purchases only and that they agreed to the terms and they're given basically this policy. When the bill comes in, we send it out to the cardholder. The cardholder puts together a spreadsheet, tells us what the expense was, basically what it's for, and what general ledger line I was charged it to. Then they sign off on it. They send it to their supervisor, and their supervisor signs off on it until it gets to the department level and the department signs off on it. Then it's sent back to finance. Finance reviews it to see if there's been any taxes. That's one advantage is it indicates a tax exempt status because it is through the state of the country, so it helps us keep taxes off of these purchases. When it gets back to purchasing, it's reviewed. Basically, in most instances, it's reviewed two times before it's actually paid. And we have 15 days from the date of receipt. The billing cycle ends and the date the bill is due. We have 15 days to get that paid, so we have to move it pretty quickly. Then they're stored with our other vendor files, and they're available for review. Basically, this is a purchasing card program policy that we have been following since we implemented the policy many years ago. It's just not been a fully approved policy. The differences that we've added is on page nine under section... For responsibilities, there's first responsibility of what cardholder rests do, then the program administrator and the program administrators within our office. And at the end of section B, that program administrator, we have added number 20, which is to scan and store the invoices and details spreadsheets for review by others. And 21 is assist the commissioners in rotation by the post-commissioners, reviewing them monthly. It has been brought to our attention that although everything in our office is available for review and review, we have about 10 filing cabinets that are packed full of files, and anybody's welcome to review those. This is just a part of that. It was requested that each of you rotate two at a time to come in and review those bank of credit cards. That's fine. It doesn't make any difference to us. You're welcome to review any invoices that you would like to review. Basically, this policy just says you're going to do.
Policy says what?
Policy says that you're going to review them. Check policy.
I've talked about this over the last eight months. I've also talked to the post-commissioners, and we've got several different places we can review them. We didn't want to tie our hands inside of a policy where we didn't review them. One way is somebody criticized us for not giving them that particular way, but it was not made a suggestion by myself, and I talked to each of the post-commissioners individually, that basically we would start now with the new year. We would begin July 1st. We would start off with Post One and Post Two Commissioners, Mr. Carmichael and myself. July 1st to September, that once a month, we would come in together and sit down and do that. Or we would review them in a different way. And then after July 1st to September, it would go to October, November, December, it would go to Post Two Commissioner, myself, and Post Three Commissioner, Mr. Clay. And then January, February, March, it would go from Post Three to Post Four. And then aggregate June, it would go from Post One to Post Four to Post One. In other words, we would rotate. We would all be looking the same thing. It just would give us an oversight. We're not... I don't want any of the employees that are holding the purchasing cards to think we're looking out for something that you're doing wrong. Naturally, that may be part of it, but that's not the reason. The reason is, is we've had citizens come to us and ask us and question us, and we feel like we need to come up with something that we can do, that we can say work, take them a look at things. So that's kind of the suggestions that I've made, and all the post-commissioners have agreed that there's not a problem with that. But whether we come in together or we do it in a different way, that Tabitha sends them out to us, that's what I'd like to see done. That way, we're taking care of what we should be taking care of.
This policy supports... There was a new law that was passed in this legislative session by the Georgia Legislature, and so it required all counties to come up with a policy and pass it by the Board of Commissioners. And this is our policy, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Thanks for your work.
Thank you. That's the conclusion of our regular discussion.
Mr. Chairman, say my name again. I'd like to address something that did take place maybe a couple weeks ago. And you know, we have a news item on the news. It seems like we always have something on the news. I wish it was more positive than negative, but sometimes it's negative and we have to deal with it. I can't speak for the whole Commission Board, but I can definitely speak for myself. And I just want everybody to know, all the citizens to know, that background checks on citizens and taxpayer money is not something that we normally do, want to do, or should do. I think this policy with credit cards is going to help look at that and take care of that. But I just want the citizens to know that, you know, we got your back. We're not coming after you. Please understand we're looking into it and trying to see all of our options to see what we can do. Thank you.
Before we leave, Vernon stole a part of mine. You know, it's okay to apologize to people. I believe that law in my heart. If you feel like you've done wrong, you need to apologize. I had nothing to do with the background checks. To the best of my knowledge, nobody up here did. But I personally, on the Board of Commissioners, to the public, would like to apologize that these things were done and very unprofessional and shouldn't have been done. So from me, to the public, to y'all, I do apologize for that.
Thank you. Thank you. Here, before we go on, I would like to... I'd like to make a motion and we add one thing for a quick discussion, and that is the IBA bonds, the IBA bond payments that are due August 1st. I'd like to make a motion and we'll take just a couple minutes and discuss that.
So you wanted to add new...
Yes, sir.
So you want to add items to discuss the bond payment being made?
The IBA bond payments that are due August 1st.
Do you have a second?
Motion second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Tabitha, do you mind coming to the...
You want to kind of give us a little background here?
Most of the county's debt is scheduled to be paid on two days, August 1st and February 1st. And the IBAs... I'm going to stick with that, and if you have any other questions about any other day, I have some of that information available. But in 2011, when we issued the IBAs debt, they kept the same schedule. So on the 2011A, which was bonded for $1.1 million, which was used to construct the water tank out of the airport, is... There's a bond payment due on August 1, in the amount of $65,060. And there's also the 2011B, which was an original amount of $6.8 million, and it was to construct, it was to construct the film studio and the painters. That bond payment is due on August 1, in the amount of $417,999. The way these are structured is the entire annual principal payment is due on August 1, and half the interest payment is due on August 1. So in February, all of those, the other half of that are all disowed on the debt. The other half of the interest will be yours, if that makes sense. So if you add those two together, it will become to... There's a debt payment in the amount of $483,000, roughly $483,000. That is...
And have you heard from the Industrial Building Authority with a proposal?
I have. Throughout the budget process, I've talked to the Industrial Building Authority. They did tell me that I should probably prepare to pay the debt, and then they have come back later and just told me that they would be able to pay some portion of the debt.
And is that conditional on them receiving money from the county integrated bond?
I assume, but I don't know that.
Okay. There is an amount we fund.
Yes. It's in the amount of $275,000 that's going to go into everything up here.
And from what they told me, they want to apply that money to the debt and then pay the balance.
That is the understanding that I have.
Let me make a comment, and I hate to... I get tired of having to make a comment in public because things aren't done correctly behind the doors. Sometimes after a meeting, I'm criticized for talking too much. I feel like we have two meetings a month, and this is where we're supposed to talk. I completely understand. I have called Mr. Swafford. Mr. Swafford's not here today. He's got something with his child that he needs to be at, and I agree. I've called Mr. Swafford. We had a discussion about it last week. Tabitha and I have had several discussions about it. I gave Mr. Swafford another call yesterday and have not heard back from him. He was supposed to be meeting with the IBA members on several different meetings, I guess, to let them know about what was going on as far as what his suggestion was as far as paying the bonds or not. The IBA brought this project to us in March of 2011. I had been in office for less than 100 days and voted against those three projects. Now, we've got bonds that are due that equal right at $200,000, shooting $483,000. They're due August 1st. Mr. Swafford told me that they had the money to pay them. He also told me that they didn't want to pay them because they weren't sure if this board was going to fund them next year. That's the conversation I had. And I'm sorry if he's not here today to say anything about it, but this is when our meeting is. Now, the bonds are due August 1st. I would imagine we're going to pass some sort of a budget on August 11th, and the payment's due August 1st, and it's their obligation. And I want to point it out that we've got an obligation that's due, and that's what they want to do is not do it because they feel like we're not going to fund them in next year's budget. What bothers me about that is this, Mr. Chairman. Nobody's asked me as far as the IBA if that's the case, but they've directed what they're going to do. And I guess this afternoon, Tabitha will be wiring right at $483,000, right?
Yes.
To pay their debt on another project that they've taken on. And we're supposed to do that. And the way they're going to balance out whether or not we're going to fund them or not is they're going to pay it back to us except for what they think we should fund them. Not what they think, what we have in the budget to fund them. So it's not like they're saying we're not going to pay it. There's a certain amount that we fund it, and they're saying, let's use that towards the debt payment, and we will give you the balance of that. Now, we're not here to take one person to disparage that person.
I'm not.
But when you say, this is what they're saying, this is what they're doing, and you say you haven't had a conversation, then you say you have, that's disparaging. I'm telling you, that's the plan, to be able to fund this debt, and so they, in essence, are paying for it.
Okay. I have actually talked to Mr. Swafford. Those are the words that he's told me. Sometimes you try to make a phone call to do the right thing, to have a good conversation instead of just throwing something in an email. And I made that attempt last weekend. We did talk. I made another attempt yesterday, and I made another attempt in emailing. That was the conversation that we had. He's the director of the IBA, and that was the conversation that we had. And I'm just saying that basically it's fallen on us to do that, and that's not... That's not the way that you force the hands of the taxpayers and those commissioners. If you want to sit down and have a conversation about it, and let's discuss what we're going to do, that's fine, but to do that is not in the best interest of the citizens or the taxpayers of this county. It's not.
I think to pay a debt, it absolutely is. And to pay a debt with the money that we obligated to give to the IBA in most counties, in most counties, the Industrial Building Authority, Chamber, or cohesive units, you can look and study South Georgia counties that don't have the same advantage as we do, but everybody is pulling the wagon in the same direction. They're not pulling against each other. And I'm seeing a time here where, you know, we've got a new economic development director that's been hired. There's new things coming on board. There's new folks looking at Hallen, and let's all pull in the right direction.
, uh, new folks looking at all of it. And let's all pull in the right direction. But to try to disparage and make something more different than it is, is unfair. And you say, this is the way I heard this conversation. He may have heard it another way. But from the conversation I had, uh, that's our intentions. Is, is that not the intention, is to take the 275O to the IBA?
Yes, sir.
Apply it to the debt, and then the IBA write you a check.
That is the last conversation that I understand was going to occur. He was going to go back to his board and confirm what they, what they wanted to do.
All this is in, in an effort to create jobs. Now, you know, I, please, I'll ask you to leave. This is so inconsiderate when you make that kind of noise. Uh, we're professional people up here, and it'd betray, uh, betray the profession. But, you know, yelling out, that's just something, uh, it shows your immaturity. Uh, but we're looking at trying to create jobs. And so when you look at a movie studio, and we had a presentation that came in from the state. It wasn't Pines guy, but the state came in, and at that time, Tommy Gray was the lead commissioner on this effort. Uh, and we heard the presentation, we heard what could be done, and, uh, we voted to move forward. At the same time, we're looking to bring jobs in for aviation at the airport, and we needed a water system there, and a new line by the city of Dallas has been built out there. So there's a lot of positives taking place here in this county to grow jobs and change from being a, uh, just a bedroom community where all the tax burden is on us, and has been for generations. I'm the only one up here that's in the original, sixth generation of Pauling County. I'm a dying breed, and, and some people here are a platform. But, uh, for years, my family's carried the burden, and other families that grew up here have. Uh, so I'm just saying, in an effort to bring jobs to Pauling County, we've looked at what would, what would help us, uh, what could be done. And we're starting to see some success at the film studio. We just had the movie Vacation was filmed there. We had the movie 42 was filmed there. We had the series Bake Off, a TV show. We had commercials filmed there. And now we've got people that, now that it's in the black for operations, only operations, not funding. Uh, now we've got people interested in buying the studio and then keeping those jobs in, in Pauling County. Uh, it, it's just another asset that we got. And, you know, keep beating a dead horse that, you know, what about the airport? If we weren't being sued, we'd have a lot more success at the airport. If we weren't being sued, uh, we'd have a lot more success at the film studio. This plays into a lot of things. And when I say Delta, there's no money on this lawsuit that put one dime of their own money into it. They've admitted that themselves. So I'm just saying to you, if we keep having this conversation about, uh, you know, enacting like people of the industrial building authority, that same kind of people that served on the assessor board, the same type of people that served on the water insurance, they were appointed, and they're doing the best job they can. So, you know, for us to stand up here and try to disparage, uh, something that's happening in the county, Franklin, I'm getting sick of it. Uh, let's move in the right direction and create jobs here and move forward. Uh, you know, there, there's a bond payment. There's a method for paying this bond payment. And if you just want to sit there and make people on the IBA look bad, or you want to make Blake look bad, go do it. But I'm telling you, there's a method for paying this debt, and it's all within the budget. I am not sitting here to make anybody look bad. I'm, I'm putting out there the facts, the bottom line. I'm going to put out the facts. This, the bottom line, bottom line on this is this. In the proposed budget, there's 275,000 that goes to the IBA. So they decided not to wait for the budget to be passed, and they've decided to force our hand. And that needs to be known. That's not the way that you do business. We're cut and dry. That's not the way you do business, is force somebody's hand. And the payments due, and we're going to take care of the payments because that's our obligation. We're the ones that ultimately have to back the bonds. This is just a prime example of what we're doing. And we're going to do that. But to force somebody's hand, we wouldn't have any other department heading the county. We'd force in the board commissioner's hand for a budget. And we shouldn't have that. We're, we're elected by the people to sit here and do the business of the people. Not all business can be done in a closed-door office or at a lunch table. It has to be done right here in front, in front of folks. And sometimes that gets a little tough. And trust me, if you think that, um, I go to bed at night and think it's easy to do this, I don't. That's not what I want to do. But I'm tired of having conversations with somebody that doesn't want to do the right thing that we should do. Don't force the board commissioner's hand to force a budget that you want. That's bottom line. They're just like any other department. We don't have the DOT department forcing our hand on the budget. We work together with it. If you wanted to know if this board was going to support or pay for the IBA, they should have asked, not doing it this way. And that's, that's, that's really, that's really what, what it is. And I'm not going to have the citizens call me and question things when they find out something six months later, when I knew about it today. And I'm very discouraged. This is what we've, this is what we're doing. This is not the way to do business. And I cannot continue to support the IBA that is going to do business this way, where things fall back on the backs of the taxpayers. I'm tired of seeing it.
Okay, I have a couple of comments. I want to make sure I understand what's going on here, too. First thing I do want to say, though, is again, I have a, I did have a conversation with Blake about the airport. Blake told me that yes, he can track business here without 139. Then do it. Quit talking about, actually, we're talking about businesses we've lost. Go ahead and bring those aviation jobs in. There are plenty of companies that come to Air Force that don't require 139. Macaulay Airport, no 139.
Right.
Carjil, no 139. Rome, no 139. They all have businesses there, the business opportunities for local businesses flying in and out of there. So let's do it. Okay? Whether we have 139 or not, let's move forward on that. It can be done. Second, I want to make sure I understand this whole deal with the bonds, because as I perceive government, the Chamber of Commerce, the Building Authority, whoever else, the Air Force Authority, these all should be self-sufficient if they're going to be on their own.
Correct.
They can't live off the government, taxpayers, or Air Force. I have talked to plenty of counties where the Chamber is self-sufficient, where the IBA is self-sufficient.
The Chamber is self-sufficient.
They are.
They're working on it.
They are self-sufficient. We give no money in the places for them to shoot.
My understanding, the IBA does.
We don't ever give money to the Chamber, nor have we given money to the Chamber.
The other thing we do is the IBA, IBA gives money to the Chamber. It's just backdoor work we're doing, okay?
That's right.
And we need to understand this, we need to know this. And, and these places need to be, I'm thrilled about it. We hired an economic developer. This guy's got a proven track right there where he's gone. He's made economic development self-sufficient. He knows how to do it. He thinks that's the way it should be. He doesn't want to live off the government. He thinks living off the government actually hurts his ability to attract business. So I think we're moving in the right direction. But we have to understand, you can't give away the farm. If you give everything and all tax abatements to a company, you've actually put the, on this, on the back of the people instead of taking it all. If a company gets 10 years tax bait, free land and everything else, where in the world is that to help the county? It's got to be a win for the county, a win for the taxpayers, and a win for that business. But what I understand is, it's been said that, and I don't like the term used, that we owe the IBA. We don't owe the IBA anybody. If we choose to fund the IBA or supplement the IBA, that's our choice. But we owe them nothing. The way I see it, they probably owe us more now than we owe them.
Yeah.
So they, they have said, if we would take what we want to give to them, they would apply it to the bond payment.
I am messenger, and, and Blake is a messenger. We both work for boards, so what I have to have the information that you give me, he has to have the information that he, that he's forwarded, the direction that they give him. So Blake and I have had a conversation that did indicate that they will pay, um, the difference between the 275 and the 483. Now that needed to go back to his board. So if that has been done and that is installed, I am not 100% certain of that. But that was the last conversation that I, and, and the understanding that they, the direction that they would be heading.
Chairman, you still, is that your understanding? So if we don't, then what happens?
The county takes, uh, pays the, you said, you have? If you do not fund them, and, 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 uh, you know, start to be dysfunctional, argue, fund them, and continue to move on the bond payment is made, and continue to do what they've been trying to do. Uh, these people serve at no pattern. They, they serve to do what's best for this whole county. And to try to demonize any of these people from any board we're on. We've got people sitting in this room that demonize our taxes system. They're just doing a job that's given to them. And I, I'm just saying, you know, rather than trying to make somebody look bad, and rather than trying to, uh, fight with people that are trying to create and bring jobs in here, let's work with them.
I'm not trying to demonize anybody. I'm just trying to, by that, make sure I understand. So it sounds to me like you're saying, uh, whether we do the 275 or not, pretty much they got us because they're not going to pay it. And I have a problem. If they have the money in their account, and we don't fund them, and they decide not to pay it, I think that's going to be, I think that's going to be, uh, them not owning up to their fiduciary responsibility. And I do know for a fact, and the Pauling neighborhood stated they were making the payment, they were going to make it out of their reserves. Now, I'm here today hearing they're not going to make a payment. We're going to make a point.
Again, I can't speak. Well, that's what I understand, you know, and, uh, we're going to move forward. Either way, I'm telling you, if we don't make that payment, our bond rating goes down, and we really do.
I don't think that's the issue. We're going to make that payment.
So.
We're on the critical level.
Payments don't be made. I'm just letting people know that we're making it because they're deciding not to make it. No, they, no one's decided they're not going to do any of that. In the paper, they said that they're going to make it through money that's been allocated for.
We're operating, we don't have them.
They made a comment. Um, part of this is obviously related to budget cycles. So when you get, the fiscal year starts July 1st. This is July 21st. So fiscal year 2016, the budget we're going to vote on, it goes back 28 days. But it's funded with money that came in last year. Is that correct?
Well, it's funded with the money that's, um, our reserves that are used, and then they're replenished with the money that comes in at the fall that they're currently using.
So, so it's going to be replenished. And we need to remember that this is a 2016 budget. We just wait till August to approve it. So the 275,000 dollar commitment really falls back to the start of the fiscal year, as far as the time is silent. The other question I would ask is if you've had good conversations with Mr. Swafford, did you ever say to him, we fully intend, or have you ever over the last few months, we fully intend to support you as a team as we move forward in an industrial way, in a commercial way, uh, in different departments that have to function to keep our county moving? Uh, Ms. Pollard helped me have the information to make a chart here. Now, I really didn't have to be able to hand it out to you, but, um, didn't get a copy. Of Pauling County, Douglas County, Cobb County, Carroll County, and Barto County, um, comparable counties and nearby. Pauling County is 76% residential tax revenues county. The next closest is 63% in Carroll County. Pauling County and, uh, has the lowest industrial tax revenue at 1%, and it's tied with Carroll County in the lowest commercial, um, revenue from commercial taxes. So, you know, it's just factual information to me that says it has always been on the homeowner's back, and we need to move away from that. Um, but I, I've told Mr. Swafford and members of the IBA over the last few months, we fully, I fully intend to support you on the normal 275 dollar, uh, budget that's been talked about, that, again, really started back July 1 as far as the effective date of.
See, that's, that's the thing I keep talking about. I think you're kind of supporting here because we can't, you know, the business we did in the county, and I don't really want to name the names, is not helping the taxpayers. We actually put more burden on their back. It's about that.
Well, the taxpayers will give, they're not giving us tax, and we're giving them money to come here and to stay here.
So y'all, y'all are against economic development director?
It's got to be a win-win for everybody, Dave. But when we gave, we gave away the land, we gave away 10-year tax bait. When does it start paying the county back?
Well, when you say you gave away 10-year tax abatement, you gave, uh, let's take then roll for instance. Uh, on that, we were sitting on land that wasn't on the tax record anyway. If it was land.
Who owned that land?
Spray fields that were being sprayed on for sewage. And so there was no, in 10 years, this goes on the tax record, and we start collecting, and the people, now jobs here that they don't have to drive 50 miles away. But, you know, if y'all don't want to do tax abatement, just tell your economic development director you don't want to do that.
I'll put words in my mouth. I already said I support him. He's made it, uh, everywhere he's gone.
But you're against tax abatement?
No, I'm not against tax abatement. But they've got to be win-win for everybody.
Well, who is the best at that? Like you just said, the general man, the guy that we hired with all the expertise. Is he the best at it, or who's the best?
I think he's the best at it. And I will listen to him. That's all I'm saying. But we talked about teamwork, and teamwork works both ways, Commissioner Paul Michael. I mean, I keep hearing the teamwork's coming our way, we've got to give. If they've got the money to pay the bond payment, pay, excuse me, make the bond payments, in our budget right now, we're 2.5 million over?
Yes, sir.
That's the way it's presented, correct? 2.5 million over budget, which we have to take from reserves, which does not get replenished, okay? Then why the world, if they've got the money, they just don't want to pay it because they're upset that we may not fund them? That's not teamwork. Teamwork is they should pay it.
You're talking about a good folks.
And so if you lower our math that we're over budget.
Well, you explained as money comes in, and as we have our budget, that we start making a replacement in the ready day fund.
Correct.
And the ready day fund is only used to buy capital equipment and that.
Right. Well, in his current year budget, the 2016 budget, we have about, um, I don't remember the exact amount, but we'll say two, just over $2 million. Actually, it's about 2.8 million, I think, of equipment being purchased, one-time purchases that qualify for the use of fund balance. The 2016 budget uses about 2.30 or 4 million dollars of that. So it's not using, you're not budgeting 100% of your capital purchases to be used, um, to use fund balance to make those purchases here, and some of those with general operating credits. Now, if you add all of your capital for your general fund, if you add all of your, um, capital equipment, everything in, your revenues are expected to be about 57 million, and your expenses are expected to be about 51 and a half million. So you're going to use about 2.5 million dollars of your fund balance. So you're going to have more expenses than I anticipate revenues coming in.
That's all I'm trying to say. And I'm talking about teamwork. If they really talk about teamwork, I think they man up and pay. And next year, we can talk about what we do as part of it.
Okay. I, I'd like to say something else about it because, I will, thank you. Uh, y'all brought up the subject, you brought up the subject, Mr. Chairman, of interroll on August 25th, 2009, the board of commissioners that was sitting here then, uh, basically gave the IBA 130 acres over there, um, of the spray fields. And so some of the concerns, so, so that the public knows that there's a reason why some of this comes up, it's not just the airport, it's not just the IBA. But when you sit down in a meeting with your water department director this week, and you spend spend time with her, and you find out that we're looking at, which is on our agenda today, 1.539 million that's gonna come from the reservoir, $2,851,978 that's gonna come out of the Water Department budget, all we're gonna have is water tanks and some barns for equipment, some other things, some infrastructure done there, we're still looking at a, at a later date that we've gotta have $4,585,432 to put the rest of the Water Department out there at Macklin Road, which is on the schedule that we've got drawings for. So when you talk about some of this stuff that comes up, it doesn't come up because of the airport, or it doesn't come up because of something else, this came up because of the Water Department and what they're gonna need. And in '09, the Board of Commissioners gave away 130 acres out there to the IBA, and if you read the contract and when we're gonna get paid back, we'll probably never get paid back. Now, I hope that I'm wrong, and I hope that somebody sitting here one day can say, boy, he was wrong. I hope, I hope they could do that. But the bottom line is, when you get done reading this contract and when we're gonna get our money, one of the things says, number four, the IBA shall market and sell the property. Market and sell. Doesn't say they should market and give it away. Should market and sell. And so it, it does, it all ties back to how we support the IBA. People don't realize how many different things we've got out there that we're supporting them on. But we're not gonna get this money back for that 130 acres till lifetimes down the road. But yet, I feel like our Water Department needs to be out there tomorrow where it needs to be, Lori. We're gonna be looking for almost $5 million to do it, but we gave away some property out here for somebody else, as far as I'm concerned, to gamble with and play with. And when you look at when we're gonna get our money, I don't know that it's ever gonna happen. So, yeah, it is very frustrating. And if we had a department head in this county, and we've got some great department heads, so don't think that I think any of y'all would do this, but if we had a department head in this county that would take my arms and twist it behind my back and tell me how I'm gonna vote on the budget, and this is how you're gonna twist my arm, it's wrong. Bottom line, this is the wrong way to do business. And, and I'm tired of seeing it. I don't wanna see it no more. I'm wore out with it. I've been wore out with it for years, and it needs to change. And we, we are elected on this board from the citizens to represent the citizens here. You may not always agree with what we're doing, you may not always agree with me, and that's okay, and you're welcome to call me and email and, and us talk about it. It's fine. But this is where the public business, the private, the business of this county's supposed to be done for the taxpayer, right here is where it's supposed to be done. Anybody that sits on any other boards because of this position, as far as I'm concerned in my eyes, you should be sitting on those other boards to bring that information back to this board so that we can keep it in front of the public eye. That's why you're on those boards, not for anything else. I, I.
Thank you. I'm on this board. I'm on the IBA to create and bring economic development to Pauling County. I want to do that. And so that's what we've done. We took spray fields that were decommissioned. So they're just, they're, they're sitting out there doing nothing except receiving sewage. And so when we no longer needed those spray fields, it was like, here is a great opportunity to bring economic development to Pauling County. Folks, we gave away spray fields to the Industrial Billing Authority to take and market, and they had a great success with every one. We build on that. If we quit mining up here and try to make somebody else look bad, we don't have to make anybody look bad up here. We can all work together and, and use that land. We're gonna get paid, but the land is worthless. Look, you, you know, you can't make people buy something that they're not willing to buy. And if Pauling County is in the middle of a, a fight with, where we're being sued by Delta Airlines, gracious folks, they're suing Southwest Airlines to be able to land in Love Field in Dallas, Texas, and said, it's not right, and then they deny us being able to land here in our own county. So, you know, as we sit here, we're never going to agree. I'm for economic development. I'm for changing the tax base from homeowners to industrial and commercial. That's just a theory that we have here. We have a difference of opinion. And, and you know, if we need tax abatement, I listen to the experts to tell me how to do it. And, and, and so I'm not up here to try to say, this person looks bad, or that person looks bad, or I don't like the way this was done, or whatever, just to create turmoil. Folks, we never had commission meetings that lasted this long. We never had this kind of turmoil ever in our counties. But now we do.
That's right.
David, if you blame it on us in this whole meeting, and you blame everything on us, okay, I'll accept my part of the blame, but we do have different opinions.
If you, we walked in the door with an IGA being put in place, I'd like to know the motive behind that. An IGA to tie our hands. Who created this, this, this atmosphere?
The IGA was done in 1962.
Oh, God.
And the, the Airport Authority was created in 1972 to help Pauling County and make things better. I didn't sell the land, the Jones family sold the land to the city of Atlanta. I didn't do any of that. I walked in, and there was an airstrip, and I said, I'll figure out a way to help try to make this be successful. I've done that as hard as I can do, and there's no benefit to me, and in fact, financially, I'm a lot worse off today than I was when I walked into office. But I promise to do economic development, and that's what I've been trying to do. If y'all wanna wreck that, if you don't wanna do it, then don't do it.
I don't think any of us wanna wreck it. I mean, I'm sorry.
If you're trying to wreck the IBA, you're trying to disparage people on it, that's not, that's trying to wreck.
I'm trying to count the budget.
Mr. Chairman, the, and I'm not sure, and I may be wrong, somebody can tell me if I'm wrong, the spray fields, I don't think were decommissioned. I think we, when we got rid of the spray fields, we got rid of sewage.
When I came into office, when I came into office, we took copper mine and we put some money in that to be, be able to, be able to treat that water to a higher capacity and be able to put it in the creek and decommission the field. All of them aren't decommissioned, but there's a portion that worked. And so being able to do that opened up an opportunity to bring in industrial and commercial development. And, and so I'm saying, we have all spray fields sitting there not on the tax record. And in 10 years, they will be on the tax record. But again, I leave it up to the Robert Reynolds of the world to be able to figure out how to do tax abatement and what works best for bringing in. You don't. When you make a situation, and, and Robert explained it to me the other day, you're competing, you're competing against Fulton County, you're competing against Cobb County. Well, the Industrial Billing Authority was constitutionally set up, and we have a little more rights, and we can do stuff that Fulton and Cobb can't do. So I say, let these people do their job and bring those jobs into Pauling, and if we have to fund them with some money, let's fund them. Because they're creating jobs here and they're keeping our people from having to leave. And, and like me, I, I drove 53 miles one way for 30 years. I'm, I'm trying to change that for my grandchildren and their children. We're not gonna change it for us, but we're gonna change it for them. When I say let's all work together and be cooperative, it was something that, you know, this was set up in 1962, and it's constitutionally set up. And similar to Robert, and he'll explain to you like he did to me about what, how much better it is to have that set up than maybe what Fulton, and some other folks have to, to take advantage of, being able to maybe win a, a development over one of those other counties that might choose, also, there, there aren't tax incentives in the opportunity zone for creation of jobs. So there's several different ways to do this. And I'm trying to study it so we can take advantage of that and be a balance. So we're not having to build more schools, we're not having to educate more people, but we're actually balancing, yes, industrial. I can go all day long, Joe, if you'll do the debate.
Well, I guess, no, it, maybe it kinda got off track a little bit, but I think it all ties in, ties in. Earlier this year, the IBA had over $900,000 in their, in their coffers, according to what they said. And all I'm, all I'm saying is, we can't continue to do things where we, in my view, would give away the spray fields, we're the last one on the list when we're the ones that had the assets, and we're the last one on the list to gain anything out of it. If we give it to somebody, they use it, and when you read the contract, at the end of the day, we may never see anything from that. But yet, soon, we're gonna have to help Lori do what we need to do to get the money to be able to work out here on Macklin Road for the Water Department. And that, you know, Water Department gave away 130 acres, and that it says to market to sell, and we've given it away to them.
The Water Department, that's county home department. The Water Department had no income coming in from, the Water Department had really not a good use for that except to sit there. And so, you know, to be able to look at industrial and economic development, it just makes sense to see if they came better, go out and market this product. And I'm not saying, I'm not saying it was all bad. I'm really not. I'm not saying it was all bad, but at the end of the day, we're the last one on the list to get any money. And, and so there's a lot of things I think we can do, but we, this board's gotta take care of the taxpayers' assets, and it's, to me, sometimes it's like we're just giving things away.
Take care of the taxpayers' asset, and yet, we're gonna move a 90-month center at place $300,000 of money. So we end up talking out two sides of our mouths.
No. It's also an issue about best location.
That is the conclusion of our regular business session, and thank God. Executive session for pending litigation and personnel. Potential litigation.
It might be pending, then.
And personnel. Uh, there are motion to go into executive session.
Make it.
You go with, uh, the public. Uh, Tucker first.
Oh.
Speaker.
I'll, I'll.
Your turn.
The closed session's gonna go a while.
I make a motion, we go ahead and let public participation happen before we go into executive session.
Second. There's a motion and second. All in favor, say aye. Here's five of them. We'll have our public participation, personal liberty on the Watson government.
Good morning, Commissioners. Are you? Today, I would like to touch on a few matters regarding our Watson government complex. I realize that you've been very busy with other county businesses and have a lot on your plates, especially Todd, due to the last ridiculous attempt of Mike Jones to take him down. So I would like to take this opportunity to remind you of two issues that are still waiting to be addressed, even if they aren't discussed or dealt with today. First is the Airport Authority and IBA meeting location here, which has not yet been determined. Although the Airport Authority Board decided they would continue holding their meetings in the BOC room, this room, the final decision is not up to them since this room belongs to you. Residents still believe it would be both appropriate and advantageous to hold Airport Authority meetings at the airport, which can be safely done. However, should you choose to allow them to continue meeting in this room, residents expect that they will be responsible for the associated costs and not the taxpayers, since the IGA has eliminated the county airport department. We also think the IBA meetings should continue to follow the Airport Authority meetings at the airport. Next, I've been told the county is addressing parking safety issues here at the government complex since the occurrence of the April 2015 accident. If that is accurate, will you please inform the citizens of its status since parking safety is a concern and something we feel is a necessity in order to keep everyone safe while visiting the complex? And to conclude, I would like to thank you for your common sense vote to deny alcohol sales at the August 9 concert, then August 9, to be held here at Veterans Park. Not only is consumption of alcohol in our parks advanced county regulations, but we value our prestigious government complex and the park, and for various reasons feel they are not the appropriate venue for alcohol sales. Thank you for your time and consideration.
You have a motion to go into executive session for potential litigation and personnel.
Motion to go into executive session for potential litigation, make pending litigation and personnel.
Your second.
Second.
Uh, any discussion?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We will return, and I won't say short.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.